I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, to order. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I guess we'll start there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the second item on the agenda is welcome and introductions. So I'll start. I'm Annette Stewart. I'm a planning commissioner and serving as the chair this evening.
Wayne Wright, Planning Commissioner, number four.
Paul Farnum, no planning commissioner.
Stephanie Bailey. Is there any other planning commissioners?
You're Morrison, Planning Commissioner.
Okay, city staff, please.
Nick Bond, Community Development Director.
Jim Fisk, Principal Planner.
John Rajah, Associate Planner.
Bernard Alquist, Assistant Planner.
Is that everybody?
My name is Alex Campbell. I've been serving as a consultant to the City of Port Orchard for the comprehensive plan update.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so moving on, do we have audience members?
There are three members of the audience.
Okay, are there any audience members that would like to talk about anything that isn't on tonight's agenda?
If there are any members of the public that want to speak, if you could please raise your hand.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so let's move on. Item number four, the approval of the minutes from the August 19th, 2024 minute or meeting.
Annette, I'll move to accept the minutes, move to approve the minutes from the meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, well, thank you so much. Let's move on to business item number five. So business item five A is a public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. The 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update includes revisions to all elements and the Bethel suburbia plans, introduction, land use, housing, parks, national or natural systems, economic development, transportation, capital facilities, climate resist re yeah, that word, Bethel One Subarea Plan and Sedgwick Bethel Subarea Plan. A public hearing will be held to gather testimony on proposed updates. And the staff contact is Jim Fisk, the Principal Planner. Do you want me to open the public hearing first, or do you want to talk about it first?
I'll introduce it and then and then Alex will we'll kind of tag team this, so.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'll get started.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Planning Commission members. And thank you for your flexibility to meet on Zoom as City Council Chambers is is under renovation. I'm Jim Fisk, Principal Planner with the City of Port Orchard. The primary objective of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update is to ensure that Port Orchard's planning framework remains consistent with State Growth Management Act, Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, and the countywide planning policies. In late 2022, we undertook a selection process to engage a consultant for this update. After careful consideration, we chose HBL, a firm with extensive experience in urban planning. HBL assembled a skilled team incorporating several of the city's on-call consultants who are already familiar with Port Orchard. This collaboration ensured that we leveraged local knowledge and expertise throughout this update process. Following the consultant's selection, we developed a comprehensive public participation program. This program aimed to engage our community in a meaningful conversation about the comprehensive plan update. To kick off this engagement, we hosted an open house in January of 2023. Unfortunately, attendance was lower than we had anticipated. So recognizing the need to adapt, we shifted our outreach strategy to include an online platform. This allowed community members to participate at their convenience. Additionally, we established some outreach efforts at the farmer's market, making it easier for residents to engage and share their input. These adjustments led to a noticeable increase in public participation. It was documented in the public engagement summary completed in late 2023. Simultaneously, the team completed an existing conditions report. This report serves as a foundational baseline for the development of the comprehensive plan elements, providing data on population demographics, housing, economic conditions, and more. Beginning in February of 2024, the Planning Commission began a review of all 10 elements of the comprehensive plan. These elements include those mandated by the GMA, including introduction, land use, housing, parks and recreation, natural systems, economic development, utilities, transportation, capital facilities, and climate elements. Each of these were reviewed and commented on by the commission in public. Additionally, iterations of each element were periodically posted to the city website as they became available. Throughout this year, the city hosted three workshops addressing key areas, including policies, land use, and the Bethel subarea plans. Each workshop was conducted both in person and online, ensuring maximum accessibility for the community. Throughout 2024, both the Planning Commission and the public provided comments on all draft elements. In response, staff created a comment matrix that identified each comment and its status regarding consideration and revisions. It's noteworthy that the majority of feedback led to further revisions, which is important to ensure we are incorporating the community and the planning commission's input into our planning process. The comment matrix was provided in the June Planning Commission Packet and discussed in June and August Planning Commission meetings, ensuring transparency and engagement throughout the review. The outcome of our public outreach efforts and the thorough review by the Planning Commission is reflected in the elements under consideration this evening. We believe that these updated elements satisfy the requirements set forth by the Growth Management Act, Puget Sound Regional Council, and the countywide planning policies. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Alex Campbell of HBL. We'll provide an overview of some of the regulatory requirements and provide some additional detail on each element.
Great, thank you, Jim. My name is Alex Campbell. I work with HBL. As Jim mentioned, we are a consulting firm that's been retained to help the City of Port Orchard update the comprehensive plan. For tonight's presentation, I prepared some regulatory framework revolving around the comprehensive plan update, particularly for this update cycle, there's been some unique legislation that has to be incorporated primarily related to middle housing. There's been some other minor tweaks related to the comprehensive plan update cycle. And I prepared a presentation that might look a little familiar to the planning commissioners. You guys may have seen this once or twice, so I'm going to look for a direction from Jim from the city just quickly to make sure that that we want to run through that presentation and just give a brief summary of the regulatory framework. I think some of this is going to be an overview of what we presented previously.
Well, I think it's important that I know the Planning Commission is familiar with with a lot of this, but it's important for the public to, who's in attendance, to kind of understand what we're mandated to do and where we're going.
Great, yeah, happy to share that. I'm going to share my screen here. And then I just want to confirm quickly with you guys that this is showing up for everybody. Perfect, thank you. Great. As Jim mentioned, really, the purposes, the purpose of this presentation is just is is just to give a brief background of the regulatory framework related to this comprehensive plan update and then provide a brief summary of the 10 individual elements that comprise the city's comprehensive plan. So the baseline foundation for all comprehensive planning in Washington State is the Growth Management Act. Really, what that does is it sets the floor for what is going to be required for comprehensive planning within the state of Washington. Those regular, those regulatory the regulatory basis for GMA as it relates to individual municipalities varies slightly, kind of the county jurisdiction to jurisdiction. But from a growth management or from a state perspective, there are certain elements that have to be incorporated into every comprehensive plan. So really, this is the foundational building block for comprehensive planning within the state of Washington or multiple regulatory items that have to be included in all comprehensive plans. And from a state level, that is enacted by the Growth Management Act. So who plans for growth? Kitsap County, Port Orchard, you guys are included. So all qualifying counties and cities have to plan for growth. And the idea being in the name is that is comprehensive in nature. The purpose is to plan for growth in a way that not only the city can anticipate how to handle anticipated growth over the next 20-year horizon, but that growth can be coordinated not only at the local level, but the county level, the regional level, and at the state level. Updates previously to this legislative cycle occurred every eight years was the major update cycle for comprehensive planning. New legislation has moved that update timeline to every 10 years. So the next major update following this 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update will occur in 2034, which is a wild number to say. From a growth management perspective, there are major goals here, and all of these goals have been baked into the final draft comprehensive plan that has been presented in the packet tonight. Some of the major ones that are relevant through our public engagement process are primarily related to housing, land use, and transportation. There are minimum requirements that have to be incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. Again, landing or land use, I'm sorry, transportation, housing, capital facilities, utilities, and a new regulatory requirement in this update cycle is climate change and resiliency. We'll dive into that section in a little bit more detail here shortly. The next building block for the foundation of comprehensive planning is the regional perspective. And from a regional perspective, that is implemented through the Puget Sound Regional Council. They provide what's called Vision 2050, and that is their growth plan over the planning horizon. So the Puget Sound Regional Council will enact additional requirements on top of the State Growth Management Act, but those are a little bit more localized at the state level. That's a regional level. So Puget Sound Regional Council has involvement in Kitsap, Pierce, King, and Snohomish Counties. They're the Metropolitan Planning Organization that is primarily originally focused on transportation. And as transportation necessarily informs land use and housing and economic development, PSRC has started to expand out some of those regulatory requirements for comprehensive planning to address transportation, not just in a silo of transportation, but considering the effects of land uses. Diving down into a more local level, there's the Kitsap County Countywide Planning Policies. That is the countywide level where Kitsap County, as a county agency, looks at all the jurisdictions and municipalities under the county umbrella and just make sure that from again, the county level, all growth allocations, growth projections, anticipated growth is coordinated. Everybody is, for lack of a better phrase, on the same page in terms of growth allocations for individual municipalities. And again, this just ensures that from a regional or a county level, all of these individual comprehensive plans are speaking to one another. And diving down to the most local level for comprehensive planning is the City of Port Orchard's comprehensive plan. So the city has conducted comprehensive planning throughout its history. The most recent major update is 2016. There's been some periodic updates or interim amendments revisions since 2016, but the last major update was conducted in 2016, which brings us to this 2024 major periodic update process. So really, this periodic update process is focused on updating for current conditions and also incorporating the regulatory framework that Jim had mentioned from the Growth Management Act and PSRC. So not only are we focused on the regulatory items, we're also making sure that the comprehensive plan reflects current conditions in the city, current resident desires and areas of focus that members of the public would like to see reflected in the city's comprehensive plan. In terms of implementation, what do we do with the comprehensive plan? So really, the comprehensive plan is a large document with a lot of information. How do we distill that and make sure that we can actually use it moving forward? The comprehensive plan really sets the goals and policies for the city in terms of land use, housing, all the individual elements contained within the comprehensive plan. Those get further distilled outside of the comprehensive plan itself into development regulations, zoning districts, and specific land uses. Drilling down one more level at the actual physical development and construction stage, the development regulations get applied in terms of development permits. So really, what we see on the ground in terms of construction is informed by the comprehensive plan to some degree. So we want to make sure that the comprehensive plan, development regulations, and permits all are in line with one another and speaking to one another for consistency. For Port Orchard's comprehensive plan, again, every major update now will occur every 10 years. One of the largest items for Port Orchard, similar to most areas in the Puget Sound region, is growth. Housing growth, population growth. The most recent population estimate for Port Orchard from the Office of Financial Management in the state of Washington, which is which establishes the population amounts for each city so that everybody's working on the same numbers. As of 2024, the city's population was 18,300. The city has seen 3% or higher growth rates since 2022. Significant amount of growth and a lot of growth since 2020, in particular exacerbated by the pandemic, which has put a lot of stresses on the housing market and transportation and other infrastructure. Outside of periodic updates, which occur every 10 years, a lot of change can occur at the city within a 10-year timeframe. There's annual amendment opportunities, and this is where members of the public and city staff can make sure that the comprehensive plan is staying true to on-the-ground conditions and reflective of community desires. So there is an opportunity throughout this periodic update process to fine tune the comprehensive plan. In terms of timeline, this was our overall scope for this comprehensive plan update. We really kicked off this process in fall of '22, and we divided this into six major tasks. The first being the initial evaluation, looking at all the existing policy documents at the city, what needs to be updated, what has been recently updated, how are the development regulations either consistent or inconsistent with those policy materials? Moving on from there, public engagement, really this item occurs throughout the entirety of the comprehensive plan. Anytime we put together a revised draft, we want to make sure that the public gets their eyes on it, and we can solicit feedback and incorporate that feedback into another revised draft. Moving on from initial evaluation and public engagement, we have our draft updates. And really, the bulk of that occurred a majority of last year, 2023, and too early this year, 2024. Planning Commission want to give you guys a specific thank you for the work that you've done, a large volume of information. If I recall correctly, I think we received over 450 comments specifically from the Planning Commission. That's independent of public comments from our workshops as well. So a large amount of information, a large amount of feedback that is appreciated. That brings us to task five, final draft updates, and task six, update adoption. These are the phases that we are currently tasked five and six. So really, we're getting towards the end of the process, not to say there isn't time to solicit additional feedback. That's the purpose of tonight's meeting. There is a regulatory obligation to adopt the comprehensive plan by the end of this year to maintain eligibility for grant funding, and that's the target that we are driving towards. With that being said, though, we are still looking for feedback on this final draft that you guys have reviewed in your packet and would love to hear what you guys think. So for tonight's meeting, I just want to provide a brief overview of each of the individual elements. And I won't belabor the point. I think the packet itself speaks to all of this information in general, but I think it is good to give a broad overview of really what each of these individual elements contain and what the intention is. So our introduction element is really setting the framework of of the why, essentially all the information that I just explained, what is the regulatory implications of comprehensive planning? And how have we made sure that this comprehensive plan meets that mark? Provide some local context for the City of Port Orchard. Every municipality is different, has different unique local features and political desires, and how can we make sure that those are reflected in the city's comprehensive plan? The land use element really focuses on establishing land use, no surprise, but specifically zoning and future land uses. How do we make sure that the city has enough capacity for the allocated growth that we're expected to see over this 20-year comprehensive plan horizon? And not just from a residential standpoint, but also from an employment standpoint. So this is where we conducted the land capacity analysis that was conducted in your packet or concluded in your packet as well. And that was our baseline to ensure that the city has adequate capacity to accommodate housing, population, and employment over the 20-year planning horizon. Importantly, land use doesn't occur on its own. Land use requires transportation and utility concurrency to make sure that if housing is constructed, they can be serviced by these utilities, transportation, and infrastructure, excuse me. Also, we consider items like natural resources. How do we make sure that the city's natural resources, wetlands, shorelines are not negatively impacted as a result of the growth that the city is expecting? And how do we make sure that the land uses established in this element also speak to the housing requirements and housing types that the city expects to see developed over the course of the next 20 years? The housing element, this was a major focus for this regulatory cycle from the state level. Really, kind of the major focus for housing in this update cycle has been middle housing and making sure that the city provides for it. The City of Port Orchard, from my perspective and experience in working in other municipalities during this comprehensive plan update cycle, Port Orchard is kind of uniquely already tailored to accommodate a lot of middle housing typologies within its residential zoning, which is great, helps alleviate stress from additional population and housing prices that are a major focus for all of Puget Sound currently. Our element within the comprehensive plan provides an analysis of the city's existing housing stock. What's the average age? What's the average homeownership? What are the demographics associated with those items? Importantly, with this update cycle, there's a housing allocation by income band that's included in the city's housing element, the draft element that you guys have seen today. And there's a need for each individual income band and then a capacity which relates back to the land use capacity that I referenced earlier to ensure that, one, the city has identified how much of each type of housing by income level is needed over the 20-year horizon. And two, the city has adequate capacity to develop that type of housing. It's important to note that nothing in this comprehensive plan obligates developers or individuals to build this type of housing. There is no specific requirement, but it does ensure that the city allows that type of development. Two major pieces of legislation for this update cycle include House Bill 1110, that references middle housing. And then House Bill 1137, which is specifically focused on accessory dwelling. Both of these items have been included in the city's housing element in this draft that you see before you and have been included in our land capacity analysis to make sure that there's adequate capacity for our anticipated growth rate. Just as an idea for what middle housing means, I think middle housing, it's important to kind of understand there's a broad array of middle housing typologies, kind of down to the smallest individual footprint would be duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And then that can go up to items like sixplexes, multi-story apartment buildings and condominiums. Really, there's a wide array of middle housing typologies. And the primary focus for this comprehensive plan update is ensuring that the city is allowing those types of housing within residential districts as appropriate and as mandated by the state. The city's parks element, the major focus of this update was to include information from the city's 2022 Park Recreation and Open Space Plan that was recently completed. The city's PROS plan is what that's referred to. We wanted to summarize the findings and needs from that PROS plan, essentially identify the good work that was done with the PROS plan and incorporate that to the park and recreation element of this comprehensive plan. The natural system element really aims to identify critical areas and sensitive areas within the city and establish ways to not only maintain them, but also improve them through goals and policies to ensure that those areas can be either revegetated, conserve, or linked together to create open space networks. The economic development element refers back to also the land use section. This is where we want to make sure that we have not only enough employment capacity from a land use perspective to accommodate the projected growth and job forecast growth that the city expects to see over the next 20 years, but also establishes goals and policies to retain small businesses, promote additional business ownership throughout the city, and try to create a competitive employment environment in the city to entice people to establish jobs and work within this city. The utilities element, the main focus here was ensuring consistency across other city policy materials, primarily the water system plan, general sewer plan, stormwater watershed comprehensive plan, and also include elements from PSRC and the Growth Management Act. The transportation element is a large bulk of work. You'll notice this is probably the longest individual element in the comprehensive plan. Just for some background on that, really, the transportation element is the primary focus of PSRC as their role as the Metropolitan Planning Organization. There's a lot of regulatory information that's included in the transportation element, things like travel demand modeling, a level of service expectations, identifying funding sources for future improvements. And that was really the main focus of this update for the transportation element. The city's capital facilities element had a pretty large refresh in this update cycle, a specific look at that. The major goal was to provide an inventory and assessment of current city facilities and understand the need for future facilities and start to understand how those items get funded over the 20-year horizon. The climate element is a new element in the city's comprehensive plan with this update section. There is a regulatory requirement in 2029 that jurisdictions in this update cycle adopt this climate element. So we wanted to get ahead of that, so to speak. We want to make sure that we're incorporating some goals and policies that are reflective of the current guidance from the Department of Commerce. So that way, when 2029 comes around, the city is one step ahead in terms of getting this adopted and ready to go. There will be additional work and analysis that's required specifically related to vehicle miles traveled and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, a lot of scientific data that just wasn't feasible to include in this two-year update cycle. The Department of Commerce has recognized that, which is why the adoption for that is set at 2029. So the goal for this climate element is to establish a baseline for this analysis heading into 2029. Additionally, outside of the comprehensive plan, just itself and the individual elements, the city conducted subarea planning for two specific areas along the Bethel Corridor, Bethel Lund and Sedgwick Bethel. Both of those subarea plans were included in the packet along with the associated appendices, diving into specific land use capacity analysis for both of these subareas. The primary focus for the subarea planning efforts in both of these areas was to ensure that we're meeting the countywide center activity count. Activity counts are essentially an aggregate number of housing and job capacity within the subareas based on the land uses established within the subareas. So the major focus of the subarea planning was to make sure that we can achieve that required activity unit count and then also take advantage of a lot of the existing infrastructure improvements and planned improvements that are going to occur along the Bethel Corridor. There's a lot of existing infrastructure, primarily transit in both of these areas. So to leverage that to more effective land uses to accommodate the housing growth, population growth, and employment growth that the city expects to see, a major strategy is the center strategy, and that's been implemented in the city's comprehensive plan previously. And the subarea plans that you see before you tonight further implement that for these two areas along Bethel specifically. And with that, that summarizes really kind of the regulatory framework, and that was a quick run through. I appreciate you guys letting me re-summarize that for planning commissioners, hopefully some good information for members of the public. And just encourage members of the public to stay involved through the planning commission process and future city council meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Pardon me. As previously stated, we believe that the comprehensive plan elements presented to the commission tonight align with the GMA Vision 2050 countywide planning policies. Vision 2050 countywide planning policies. These elements lay a framework for implementing state mandated changes that Alex discussed. Related to middle housing, accessory dwelling units. And planning for affordable housing accessible to all income levels. In line with our progress, the city issued a determination of non-significance related to this periodic update on September 24th. Following that, we submitted the elements to the Department of Commerce for a 60-day review on September 25th. And earlier today, we provided the elements to PSRC for their review, which typically requires about 30 days. Tonight, we requested the Planning Commission open a hearing to take public testimony regarding the comprehensive plan. Notice for tonight's public hearing was provided in accordance with our codified requirements. If the Planning Commission has additional input on the elements, we kindly ask that those comments be submitted in writing no later than October 15th. This will allow our team to incorporate any suggestions into the version that will be presented at the October 29th Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, we anticipate closing the public hearing and seeking a recommendation. From the Planning Commission to the City Council. While we encourage their comments to be delivered to us by the 15th. Please note that the record will remain open through the close of the hearing, allowing for ongoing public comment. So thank you for your attention. Thank you, Alex, for the great presentation, and I look forward to hearing. The insights from the public and the commission during tonight's hearing.
So, thank you, Alex, and thank you, Jim, and the rest of the planning staff. It's a lot of, lot of information, a lot of hard work has gone into this. And so now I would like to open the public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update.
Jessica, we'd like to speak. I will allow it to go. Jessica, we can hear you.
Hello? Hi, um, thank you, Commission. Good evening. Thank you for the hard work that you've put into this plan. It really shows, and I appreciate all of the outreach that you've done to. Try to reach the public through many different means. I'm a resident of Port Orchard, and I really enjoy the beauty and amenities of our city. My biggest concern with the comprehensive plan is the transportation portion. Our city really needs to have connected and protected bike and pedestrian pathways. I believe that the city needs a master plan on these protected paths that. Go to and from areas of public use such as the waterfront, schools, residential areas, and along busy roadways. To be clear, what I mean by protected pathway is a pathway that's separate from roadway cars and from traffic. Separation from cars, trucks, and drivers allows for the safe transportation of people that choose not to drive or cannot drive. Not everyone chooses to spend a lot of money on their cars and choose to do commerce in our city near their homes. I know that other communities that prioritize these types of pathways are desirable places to live. Local examples include our own waterfront trail and the Cushman Trail in Gig Harbor. You can look and see the joy and use that these paths receive in their communities. With the advent of e-bikes, these make biking fun and an option for city-based errands. And make it more feasible for more people. This takes more pressure off of the roads and. Takes more cars off of the roads because people actually feel safe to get out of their cars and onto bikes. I believe that the city has settled on an inferior option for roadways in the Bethel and Sedgwick and Lund subarea plans. They do not include a separated path. They only include a bike lane in the roadway and a small pedestrian sidewalk. We, as you know, we get so few opportunities to make our roadways great and to make changes to them. And so I urge the commission to include a protected multi-use path along these heavily used roadways. Please give the citizens of Port Orchard the security and option to bike safely around our city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anybody else that would like to comment?
Yes, we have Ian Harkins, he's doing the panel, and. He has his hand up. I will unmute him. Ian, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ian Harkins. I'm here on behalf of the Kitsap Building Association. With the high levels of growth expected to come to the Kitsap Peninsula over the next 20 years, it's important that each city effectively plans to accommodate that growth. Port Orchard's comp plan shows several promising ways to do this, such as reducing barriers to middle housing. And zoning certain areas for higher density. However, specific to the land use section, it's worrisome to see that the city plans on using mechanisms such as impact fees to curb new development. It's just really not the intention of impact fees, and they shouldn't be used as a tool to punish. Home builders during the construction phase and eventually homeowners. At will by a city. It's important to note that the city of Port Orchard, when considering any impact fees. Must be prepared to prove that the developments subject to those fees meet the essential nexus and rough proportionality test. Otherwise, the city may face legal challenge. If the city's growth rate exceeds that which has been designated by the countywide planning policies, then the city should address that issue. Really with KRCC or PSRC. Simply pludgeoning home builders and eventually homeowners with unnecessary fee increases leads to more unaffordable housing. Again, you cannot make housing affordable by making it more expensive to build. Every fee increase, regardless of how big or small, is paid for by the consumer. For the housing section, there is much dedicated to the need for workforce housing, ideally near transit and employment centers. This is a good planning framework, and it's being replicated by every other jurisdiction in Kitsap. However, to ensure that it becomes a reality, there needs to be creative ways to incentivize existing property owners and future developers to do so. Otherwise, the housing will not be built. And one of the very few tools given to cities to encourage multifamily housing to be built where it otherwise would not be. Called the multifamily tax exemption, was actually repealed by Port Orchard in October of last year. Interestingly, though, the housing section calls for the city to consider bringing an MFT program back, even though they already had one and repealed it. So I'm curious if that, is that really in the cards for the city of Port Orchard to bring it back? I know Bremerton and Bainbridge use this exemption, and it's relatively easy for them to administer. And Kitsap County is actually going to fight in Olympia next session to try and bring an MFT to their jurisdiction as well. The housing section calls for streamlining of development regulations for permitting multi- and middle housing, multifamily and middle housing. What does that mean exactly? What does the streamlining process mean? Does that, does that mean the city is going to ease certain development regulations? Including CAOs in order to achieve that? And I was wondering if the city could provide any more detail on how the streamlining process is going to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Is there anybody else that has comments?
I do not see any other members of the public.
All right. Well, thank you, Jessica and Ian, for participating tonight. We enjoy hearing what the public is actually thinking and. And try to do our best to make sure that we're looking out for the public when we do plans such as this one. So am I understanding that we are going to leave this public hearing open? Or are we closing it?
We remain open through October 29th.
Okay. So is there, does the planning commission have any? Anything they'd like to say or questions they'd like to ask?
I've got, I've got a couple of things to bring up. I made a comment earlier on that the document needed a bit of an editing across the board. And I found that there's still quite a bit of. Editing this needed. Several figures are not referenced in the text. But they are in the document. I can provide, Jim, a better list. I've got a handful of them here. And also the formatting on the introductory section of each element. There's a green box and the font inside the green box and the same, and one of the elements has an orange box by the green box. So Alex. Make, maybe work with your crew and just go through it and groom it so that all the figures are labeled properly, referenced properly, and that the. Fonts all the same, because it looks kind of goofy. Before it goes to the council, I'd really love to see this thing polished up nicely. I also really think that the comment section that we've all worked on so hard up to this point needs to be made available to everybody. I also want to know, Alex and staff, if there have been. Edits to the document that we have not seen, make sure that they're in that matrix as well. Because I read it again all in its entirety, and I got the impression that several of my comments that were. Acknowledged but not acted on, appeared to have been acted on, and I want to make sure that. The record's clear that what you've done to the document reflects the comments received. So be sure that that matrix is accurate and comprehensive. That would be very helpful. And I do think it needs to be out to the public, so if someone like Ian or Jessica have comments about the thing. They could see what the planning commission has said or thought about before, or other people the public have said or thought about before, and how this document has evolved. That's pretty much my primary elements of looking at the current. Set of documents that are here. I commend Alex and the staff. It's a big improvement. There's some things I still don't always agree with, but you know what? I'm pleased with what you guys have done, and I appreciate Alex, your staff's work. It's a lot of work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on the planning commission? Ian, I see your hand is still up. Did you want to comment again, or is this needed? All right then, if no one else has any comments or questions. I guess we can move on to B, under the business items.
I believe item B is the director's report, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have nothing to report this evening.
Oh. Okay. Then we are at the bottom of the page where it says adjourn.
All right. And I'll back up. I guess I do have one minor report, and that is I believe we will have the council chambers available for our next meeting, so the. October 29th meeting will be, you will be able to attend in person in the council chambers.
Okay, that's greatness. Okay, anything else before we head out for the night?
I'll just echo Commissioner Wright's comments that this is a heavy lift, and it's something the planning. Team along with Alex has been working on for a long time. We know it's a lot of work. We appreciate your dedication to Port Orchard and the citizens who live here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It is a lot of hard work. Okay, well, everybody have a great night. We will see you.
I see, I think Paul has his hand up. Sorry.
Okay, Paul. No, you're, that's fine.
I just wanted to thank the members of the public who spoke for their comments. Those are exactly the kind of thought-out comments, very, very relevant comments that we've been looking for. Over the past, over a year now, we've been doing this, or nearly a year now, we've been doing this. And on top of this meeting, of course, is going to be recorded. It's going to be in the record. I'd also encourage them to go submit it online for our public comment matrix, just so it's there, because again. Very relevant comments, and again, exactly what we've been looking for so far. So I appreciate it. Appreciate showing up. Appreciate you taking the time.
Anybody else? All right, so we'll see you, everybody, on October 29th, 2024, for our next meeting in the council chambers, and I will adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks. Great job, Annette.
Thank you.